Afternoon. Call to mean order for the June 27, 2017 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Any questions on the dais for consent calendar? All right, seeing none, we have item two, special presentation. We are joined today by members of a local team, and I have a prepared statement here to read to those welcome to City Hall, first big day at City Hall, I'm guessing for most of you. This recognition of AYSO area, Q Extra BU-10 Champions. These young men represent Newport Beach this past year in the AYSO Extra Program. Extra brings together teams with the absolute best soccer talent in each city and pits them against one another in what you might call a super league. The league area spans from Los Alamitos to Irvine and from the coast all the way to Yorba Linda. It's a massive pool of great players. And for the first time in the under-10 category, I think this is actually a typo, so the team finishes season undefeated, is that true?
Yeah.
All right. The Newport Gunners, as they call themselves, finished the season 8-0, plus two wins in friendly matches. And to top off their excellent season, they went on to win the Orange County Spring Classic Tournament in Costa Mesa last month. These boys and their families represent what's best about our Newport Beach sports community: exceptional talent, unwavering sportsmanship, and a champion mindset. Path of the City Council and the city Newport Beach, I'd like to present each of you a certificate of recognition, and of course, here from your coaches before we go down and take a picture. So at this time, can I call forward Coach Jeff Muto to say a few words? Actually, while you're up there, please, why don't we also have the other coaches join you. Coach Gary Gom. And then we'll do the certificates.
The giggles are something that we deal with quite consistently, so it doesn't throw us off at all. First and foremost, we want to thank you for this honor and the opportunity. I think getting young people involved in the community and access to their civic leadership early in life is a wonderful thing, so thank you so much for that. The other thing I'll say is, these young men have the talent to go on and play for private clubs and compete at the highest levels, but they've chosen to stay within the Newport Beach AYSO program to represent their city because they love soccer, they also like the other sports and activities in Newport Beach. You'll see a lot of these kids have sand in their hair and in their feet because they just came from junior guards, and so choosing to forego kind of the higher level of competition to stay part of the Newport Beach community fabric is a conscious choice that they and their families have made, and we're super blessed by that. The last thing I'll say is, I've coached a lot of kids for a lot of years, and this is bar none the most special group I have ever encountered. Not only do they have talent, they have incredible energy, as you see, wonderful athleticism, but more than anything, they are incredibly steady in how they compete. So there were games that were quite easy, that they showed wonderful sportsmanship in and kind of backed off the throttle where appropriate. There were games that were quite difficult, where they just fought with the same attitude that they had the previous period when they were winning. And it's just a wonderful opportunity to be associated with a group of kids like this, and I am eager to watch them continue to grow and develop and to represent this city for a lot of years. So thank you very much, and boys, thank you so much for letting us coach you.
You know, at this age, one of the things that's really amazing is that they all have great individual talent, and what Jeff has done is to mold them into a team, because to win 8-0, they had to work as a team, they had to work together, they had to be forwards and defense, and they had to do it all at the same time. So thank you, Jeff. Thank you, guys, for letting us be part of your team.
Thank you, Coach. Everyone likes a winner, so it was great to have you guys here. I'm going to call you guys forward, individual by name, stay up there with their coaches, and we'll do a picture. Carson? Dennis? Jake? Nico? Peyton? Pierce? Spencer? Tyler? Wyatt? Sounds like we have some cattle in the room here. For the next item, item three, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Councilman Will O'Neill.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce Newport Coast resident, MC Sangalia, who we are honoring today because she's first an appellate specialist, is a partner with the law firm of Haynes &amp; Boone, and most importantly, the recipient of the 2017 Ellis Island Medal of Honor. I'd like to describe what that is for just a moment, and we'll wait, if it's okay, MC, for the undefeated champions to walk out. Congratulations, everybody. Did you bring your medal? No. So the Ellis Island Medal of Honor is an award given annually by the National Ethnic Coalition of Organizations to a U.S. immigrant or native-born citizen who has made significant contributions to their local communities, the nation, or the world, both through their professional accomplishments and service to humanity. The Ellis Island Medal of Honor has been recognized by both Houses of Congress as one of the nation's most prestigious awards. We congratulate and recognize MC for this phenomenal honor, and if you'd like, you're more than welcome to come up and speak. If you're not required to, otherwise, we'll take a picture. Okay?
Thank you, thanks, Will. So as Councilman O'Neill mentioned, the Ellis Island Medal really celebrates the American Dream and the immigrant experience, and it honors those who've made a lasting impact on humanity, both through their professional achievements and their humanitarian work. In Orange County, we have quite a few medalists who I'm pleased to join. Henry Sagerstrom, George Argeros, Charlie Zhang, Emile Hadad are just a few of our Orange County residents who are also Ellis Island medalists, and they've certainly made a big impact on our shared home and our communities, and I'm pleased to join them. But I'm really pleased to receive this recognition from my hometown. Not only do I live in Newport Coast now, my parents live in Newport Beach, I was raised in Newport Beach, and I'm a proud graduate of Crown Damar High School. So I really appreciate this, and this is really special. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman O'Neill, and congratulations to the award recipient. On to item four, presentation from staff.
Mayor and members of the council, Mike Pisani, Municipal Operations Director. Today, we're going to give an overview of the status of the solid waste franchises. This is kind of a team effort. I've been working with Assistant City Manager Carol Jacobs, Deputy City Attorney Ann Ewing, and our new solid waste consultant, Economics. We're going to talk about some things today that are a little different than the current franchise, and following my presentation and after we receive comments from the public, we'll have a few items that we're going to seek counsel direction for some potential changes. We're going to talk about our progress towards the new solid waste franchises, some of the changes we're considering, and new franchise regulations related to operating near high traffic facilities such as schools and churches. As kind of a refresher, our current collection system is a non-exclusive franchise system. We have 33 haulers. We have both scheduled commercial service, the regular business restaurant, ongoing service, and construction/demolition haulers that serve construction sites that are all treated the same. Haulers are required to divert 55% of the material they collect, and they're scheduled to expire on November 8th of this year. When we started with the new franchise agreements, we had a couple of goals we wanted to try to meet. One, and most importantly, is to ensure city compliance with state laws regarding mandatory commercial recycling and mandatory organics recycling, and to promote an even playing field between all the haulers in the city. Other goals, if you recall, last July, we talked about this at a study session, and it was council's direction to maintain the non-exclusive franchise system. So we're working to do that, to have it remain a non-exclusive system. But we do want to consider change in conditions that require equipment on trucks which will improve operations, and again, require implementation of state mandated recycling. Two major laws, or three major laws governing solid waste is AB 341, which is mandatory commercial recycling. The law became effective in 2014, and it basically says that every business in the state and multifamily residential of over five units must have a recycling program in place, and it established a statewide goal of 75% diversion by 2020. A more recent law that affected this past January states that any business generating over four cubic yards of organic waste per week must recycle this waste stream. It's basically grocery stores, golf courses, the majority of the restaurants in the city, Hope Hospital, and some of the larger hotels. And finally, with the acceptance of the Green Building Code, builders are now required to divert 65% of construction waste. And the state gives the city certain responsibilities. We're required to make sure there are appropriate commercial and organics programs occurring in the city. We're also required to report who's picking up the trash, where it's going, and whether or not the required recycling is occurring at every business in the city. And we must ensure there's public education and outreach annually to each business. Some of the proposed conditions in the new franchise, this is for the scheduled commercial bin service, is to require every hauler that's collecting this waste stream to include normal trash disposal, organics recycling, and dry recycling. Many haulers have annual and multi-year agreements with businesses, and businesses generally want to keep the same hauler, so we need to ensure that any hauler picking up trash in the city includes all three of the waste streams, and just doesn't cherry pick one portion of the waste stream or the other. And when the haulers reapply for these new franchises, we need to, we will require that they include detailed descriptions of where they take the material and fully describe their programs to make sure they are legal and the material is going to state-regulated Additionally, we want to require natural gas for commercial vehicles doing the normal scheduled service. These trucks drive in alleys that border residential units. Most, if not all, the trucks collecting this waste stream already are CNG-powered, so we just want to document that in the franchise. And we want to have each hauler designate a recycling coordinator to outreach to their customers, and so the city has a contact. This recycling coordinator would be familiar with the local area collection and city requirements. So instead of a business calling a company and talking to various people, they would have a designated contact for city services.
Ms. Pisani?
Yes.
Quick question from Councilman O'Neill.
Just a quick question. So as an overall perspective, when we're talking about the proposed conditions in a new franchise agreement, we are talking about obligations imposed upon us by state law that we're going to then include in the franchise agreements, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, generally speaking, when we're talking about these, we're really only, we're only talking about the commercial side of things, so not the residential, which is covered by a totally different agreement, but the, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, the franchise agreements essentially allow companies to operate inside the city, but then individual businesses have the option of going with anyone who has the right to collect trash in our city. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And on the construction/demolition side, CND, this is where haulers use either end dump or roll-off bins, and basically take material from construction sites. As I said before, 65% of the material is required to be diverted per the Green Building And this waste stream is a little bit different than the normal trash scheduled waste stream is. It's generally specific to one project, one location, for a limited amount of time. It's not ongoing five days a week, basically forever. And the application process on the CND side would also include detailed descriptions of where the material is going, how they're going to process it, and where it's going to be disposed of. So one of the other conditions for all haulers on both sectors is to increase penalties for failure to accurately and timely complete required reports. With 33 haulers, it's difficult to get every hauler report every month and stuff, so we would increase the penalties. Much of what we're recommending is to keep us in compliance with the state, and so we can tell the story of how trash is picked up, where it's going, and prove our compliance with state law. We also propose to limit the franchise term to three years in length. Right now, it's a 10-year franchise. We feel it would give us a chance to update regulations with any calibre of cycle changes, and there will be some further changes coming down the road in the next two, three years. And it gives us a chance, if we have haulers that have like minor discrepancies and aren't 100% abiding by our regulations, to make them reapply, point out, you know, how they'll fix these issues. But if a hauler's doing really well, which we believe most of the haulers will be doing, we could issue an extension without a large application procedure, and just kind of roll it over. Additionally, we're proposing a two-tiered system. Tier one would be the scheduled commercial service, and tier two would be just CND haulers. Any hauler could apply to operate one or both tiers. The reason we want to do this is items such as having a recycling coordinator is much more important on the scheduled commercial side than it is on the construction and demolition And additionally, we've been working with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee to consider options, limiting conflicts with heavy trucks in the areas of high usage areas. And one of the items we're proposing is to require trucks to have equipment that gives operators a better view of bicyclists and pedestrians, such as blind spot monitoring systems and crossover mirrors. In the example up there on the screen, a light and warning buzzer goes off in the cab when a bicyclist or pedestrian is near. These systems are relatively inexpensive, and additionally, there are new mirror systems that can be put on trash trucks that provide much better visibility at low cost. Dump truck we just received has new mirror systems that has a lot more vision on the, below the cab, closer to the roadway and towards the front also. Also, we're proposing to establish zones near high-traffic facilities to limit collection activities during various times of the day or the week. For example, the CRNR residential trucks stay out of school zones during drop-off and pickup times. The school contractor for mall dirtbin service also stays out of school zones during those times.
Sorry, a question from Councilman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a requirement, or is there a state requirement, how many operators should be in the cab? There's a driver, is there a requirement that there'd be another employee in the cab?
No.
Do communities require that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then, another general question, maybe I missed this in early part of your presentation, how many commercial haulers do we have working in the city?
33 total.
Do we have a cap on that number?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
And this map shows buffer zones around Newport Harbor High School, where the inner one is 300 feet, the middle one is 500 feet, and the 700 feet for the purple. Something like this would, if, for instance, school starts at 8 o'clock, I would say between 7:30 and 8:15, no trash trucks could be in that area on those streets. In our timeline, to get this accomplished and get the new franchises signed, we plan next month to meet with the haulers and further talk about these changes in a little more detail. In August, come back with the first reading of the ordinance for the franchise changes. September, approve the ordinance and approve the franchises in October. It's a fairly aggressive timeline, but we believe we can beat that time before the other franchises expire. So at this point, probably a good time to pause for questions of me or take comments from the public before we seek further direction from the council.
Thank you, Councilman O'Neill.
So can we go back to that, I'm sorry, the slide you were just on where you were asking us what kind of, that, thank you, the direction of staff? So I'm kind of wondering, how much wiggle room do we have and what kind of discretion do we have? Because one of the things I've noticed as I read through these, and we've had issues like this come up, it seems like the state pretty well regulates this field and pretty well tells us what we can and cannot do, and what we need to and need not do. And so when you're looking for direction, for example, when you're asking us, should we require commercial haulers to provide solid waste, dry recycling, and organic recycling services? What does the law require now? And I'm just, I don't understand what direction you'd be looking for, and I don't know what the state has and has not regulated.
Okay, the state requires businesses to have those programs in place. It doesn't care if there is three haulers in the city, one doing only dry recycling, one doing organics, and one doing trash. From a management and what we feel a better success rate of, you know, of these state standards is ensuring that every hauler can provide all the services, so we can, so a hauler doesn't say, "I really don't want to do the organics stream, you know, that's hard to recycle, I'll just take the easier stuff." And then a company that has a business that uses that company says, "Well, my hauler doesn't do organics, you know, I want to stay with them." And so basically, one, say, if you're doing commercial trash collection on scheduled routes, you have to provide all these services. Aaron?
Yeah, and just briefly, Councilman O'Neill, so all the questions that the staff's presenting you with, those are all things that are basically within your discretion, so there's, those are the issues that they want direction on, is what's within the council's discretion. But you're right, it is a heavily regulated field, so a lot of it is mandatory, but all these questions are basically within your discretion.
Oh, okay. And then, what's the upside-downside of having an agreement be other than what we're talking about right here with three years with a potential of two one-year extensions for good performance? I mean, why not five years, or why not two years? Why are you proposing this, this plan?
You probably wouldn't want to do it only two years because you have to revisit it sooner than you would like, because by the time you get the new franchises and they get up and going, it's time to renew them again. The reason we chose three years because it does give us a little bit more control, and again, revisiting it and keeping both city staff and the haulers on task for achieving these goals.
The bottom line too, Mike, I know you expect the legislature, as it has in the recent years, to continue to update the law in this regard, and having that flexibility of the franchise agreement in a fat shorter term allows us to do that more quickly.
Okay, and that was my other last question would be, are we able to have an agreement or a term in place where if a new string, a more stringent regulation comes into effect that they would have to abide by that as well? Aaron?
Yeah, that's basically how we've set them up so far, is that they have to comply with all laws, and especially with the diversion requirements, to include special provisions that basically say they have to comply with whatever the applicable law is at the time, because we recognize that the state has been increasing the diversion requirements, so that is part of what we build into the agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Just follow-up is that if we're determined that they are not following the law, are they a consequence in your later lease in the contract?
We could always move forward with a termination. Why are you proposing this plan?
You probably wouldn't want to do it only two years because you have to revisit it sooner than you would like, because by the time you get the new franchises and they get up and going, it's time to renew them again. The reason we chose three years is because it does give us a little bit more control and, again, revisiting it and keeping both city staff and the haulers on task for achieving these goals.
The bottom line too, Mike, I know you expect the legislature, as it has in the recent years, to continue to update the law in this regard. And having that flexibility of the franchise agreement in a shorter term allows us to do that more quickly.
Okay, and that was my other last question would be, are we able to have an agreement or a term in place where if a new, a more stringent regulation comes into effect, that they would have to abide by that as well? Aaron?
Yeah, that's basically how we've set them up so far, is that they have to comply with all laws and especially with the diversion requirements that include special provisions that basically say they have to comply with whatever the applicable law is at the time. Because we recognize that the state has been increasing the diversion requirements. So that is part of what we built into the agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Just follow-up is that if we're determined that they are not following the law, are they a consequence unilaterally teaching the contract?
We could always move forward with the termination of the agreement. And I think part of the reason they've gone with a longer term in the past is that in order to kind of go from a system where you let everybody in to limit the number of people, you have to give a five-years notice. So in the past, they kind of geared it off a five-year term so that the council could consider if they ever wanted to kind of decrease the number of haulers. But the council's already taken a look at that, decided they didn't want to go that route.
Councilman Pieter.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A little bit more follow-up. Mike, you talked about the requirements as far as the recycling. Just to clarify, so we're not requiring any more or any stricter requirements than what the state's requiring, right?
That's another slide on direction. We also are asking to consider moving to 65% diversion, so the, for lack of a better word, regular trash matches the CND stream, which is...
So you are asking for a higher requirement of diversion than what the state requires?
We're seeking it, yes, we're valuing your interest.
It would be nice if you would have pointed that out. I definitely am not in favor of that. I also have a problem with, you're requiring a single hauler, so if he comes in and he's hauling cardboard, because he's a cardboard expert, and he gives the best price to these guys who specialize or maybe dispose in a bunch of cardboard, now you're going to make him haul restaurant waste and organic waste because he's hauling in the city? I don't get it. You're going to have guys already that are out there that are recycling and they recycle in specialty areas, you call them easy or low-hanging fruit-type things. But the market tends to regulate that. If you've got a restaurant that's got cardboard, it's got organics, it's got regular trash, they can't haul it in the same truck, more than likely anyway. So why does it have to be the same hauler?
Again, it's to ensure we have haulers that are there to do the more difficult recycling.
You don't want him to make money unless he also takes the stuff he doesn't make money at. See, again, I have a problem with that because the market will tend to correct. If nobody wants to haul the organics and yet we require the organics to be hauled, the price will go up until someone hauls it.
Right.
So I have a problem requiring every hauler to haul every kind of trash or recycling because they do tend to specialize. You get guys that specialize in green waste for landscaping materials, you get guys that specialize in organics, and then obviously the, what you call the easy recyclables. And also in construction diversion. When they do roll-offs, they know how to separate that out to get that 65% diversion. The CNG requirements are a state requirement, we're not requiring anything higher than what the state requires as far as fuel for the trucks?
CNG is not required for commercial, it's required for the size of their fleets.
So if you've got a commercial hauler that has less than five trucks or whatever the limit is, he doesn't have to do CNG, but you're proposing that every truck in the city has to be a CNG-type truck, clean truck?
Yes. All the haulers that operate in the city are above the 15, it's a 15 threshold for AKMD. All the haulers are actually above that threshold.
So you're saying the regulation doesn't mean much because everybody already really complies?
Yes.
Again, I would not be in favor of adding to the state's requirements. You're talking about how you limit trucks near schools or during times around schools, churches, et cetera. If they're not under contract with the city, how are we going to do that? Now, commercial haulers are not under contract with us, but they have a franchise agreement, so we can kind of control that. But if you've got a FedEx or UPS truck, I mean, they're all over neighborhoods, all over around those areas, and particularly around 3:00 in the afternoon as they're trying to get their deadlines done. This wouldn't apply to any of those, right?
Correct.
You're not proposing doing a citywide ban or ordinance on these areas for all trucks, period? You're looking at Aaron like you're looking for help?
I'm not proposing anything for FedEx, so it's not my...
Yeah, I don't think they are. They're only looking at the franchise haulers.
Okay, so most of the time when you get schools and churches, they're, with rare exceptions, in residential areas. So it's mostly our CRNR contractor that we can control, and I presume you can control and regulate those guys just by working out their routes. So I don't necessarily see the need to limit these kinds of haulers there, and I think it's discriminatory to kind of allow them but not regulate the FedEx truck, even though we might have the ability under franchise agreement. Now, I don't have a problem encouraging them, you know, that, hey, there's less conflict, you don't have cars going in and out of schools. You do have a lot of cars going in and out of schools in the morning and the afternoon, and you have a lot less problems if you don't do it during these times in these neighborhoods. But, you know, sometimes traffic or whatever happens and they get stuck doing it. The term of the agreement, three years, I mean, that makes sense to me. If they're already investing in the CNG, they don't need a certain write-off and a certain term where they're guaranteed to be able to write that off, and it allows us to change that if state law changes. I think that's about it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just point of clarification, this follow-up to Councilman Pieter's questions. A hauler must have the capability but not necessarily actually perform those services in different areas? Is that what you said earlier?
Not what I said earlier, but we could consider that.
Okay. What did you say earlier?
I basically said that they would need to provide all three streams. That may be something to consider, that as long as they're subcontracting or, I mean, again, we're seeking input, so there's things we can go back and further discuss.
Okay, but you did not make a distinction between the capability to do all three, just like, let's say, a certification process versus actually offering all three. You just said, right? I want to be sure I understand it, okay. Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Yeah, I commend staff for the effort to improve neighborhood safety as far as all this goes, but I also understand it's a balancing act. You know, it just seems to me with regulations and, you know, an overlay over schools and then some of the safety equipment, you know, it just presents more headwinds for businesses. But, you know, I think in many cases, you know, safety really has to be considered first here based on some of our recent experiences. But my question is, and I think we'll probably hear some comment about the viability of, you know, the degree of hardship to have these exclusion zones, but for instance, any equipment on the trucks, does staff have any idea of what, like if we added, you know, monitoring equipment, assume cameras, to each truck, what that would cost and sort of these things we're going to ask all these haulers to do?
The collision avoidance systems are in the range of $1,000. Additional mirrors would be a few hundred dollars. You know, we would need to do further study. I know New York City has requires on any delivery truck, trash truck, dump truck, operating in the city, forward mirrors that show the front of the, on a conventional cab, show literally what's in front, up to the middle part that the driver can see. And that's actually what's on our new dump truck. I don't know if it's a new, I believe it's a new requirement for new equipment, but something like that would be a huge improvement in safety and relatively inexpensive.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Dixon?
Thank you. A couple of questions on that AB 1826. We had a presentation a year ago on the organic waste. Maybe come back and let us know how that's working. I mean, we heard from the Orange County Health Director, and just curious, if it's a mandate, how it's working and how it's working and how it's functioning in the city?
One of the things our consultant is currently doing is compiling all the reports that we've gotten from haulers. And by August 1st, we have to send the state our annual report for 2016. So in the next four weeks, we're going to have all this data and basically have a good record of kind of where we are with particularly AB 1826.
Okay, I'll look forward to that. On the question of the capability of the haulers to render the services across the board on hauling, is there an opportunity there where we are limiting or minimizing the visits of haul? If we go to one does this kind of service, one specializes in this type of hauling, one then we have these multiple commercial pickups throughout the day and interfering in neighborhoods and residential areas. So is part of the wisdom of what you're saying to create that combined capability where they would be able to pick up the waste and haul it away in one visit as opposed to multiple visits per day or whatever their cycle would be?
Organics are generally going to have to be separately collected. It's wet trash taken to various processing plants. You can't recycle with, have it the same with cardboard and other things.
Right.
Where, for basically trash and dry recyclables, it's better if you have a separate collection. It keeps the...
Oh, so they're going to be separate anyway?
We're not mandating it, they're still going to be allowed to basically dirty-murf the trash. We just need to ensure that if you're collecting a bin that has recyclables in it and a business doesn't have a recycle, a separate recycle bin, that's their recycle account, that the trash they're collecting is being dirty-murfed and not taken to the landfill.
Okay. All right, I just didn't know if there were some efficiencies to be gained. Also, on the church-school safety, I think that's a very good idea, and I certainly support that. Thank you.
Councilman O'Neil?
Coming back on the first question about the organic recycling services, I know we've talked about this, I just remember forgetting, are businesses that have organic waste required to recycle their organics?
If they generate four cubic yards or more a week.
Which is most restaurants.
Most, or maybe some really small restaurants that don't. However, not to get too much into the weeds, but if you have a strip center that has three restaurants, individually, each one may not meet that four cubic yard threshold, but if the strip center owner is paying for the trash, combined, those three will have to recycle their organics because combined, they'll be over four cubic yards a week, as most restaurants do.
And then realistically speaking, how many of our franchisees right now have the capability of doing all three, the solid waste, dry recycling, and organic recycling services?
Of the ones doing commercial?
Yes.
We really have five haulers doing most of that hauling. Basically, the three largest ones for sure have plants and places to take them. The other ones have to contract with, you know, other facilities. And part of what we want to do is document exactly everything everybody's doing and where it's going.
Okay. I don't think I can, I don't think I can support requiring our commercial haulers to do all three if the state law doesn't require it. I think at some point it probably will, but I don't think I could support that. I'm wondering, when you bring this back to us as a staff presentation on the new, you know, the resolution, how would it come back to us?
So it'll come back for an update to the franchise ordinance, and we'll be modifying the agreement as well. And just for your information, Mike, I know Mike has several more pages of questions. So I think he was just stopping so he could get public input, but it's not just these two items, I wanted to mention that.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Not a lot more pages, just a couple more.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, apologize, go ahead. I didn't realize that. What other questions would you, are you asking from the council?
Oh, there you go. I think we've probably touched on them, both increased commercial hauler diversion, 65%, along with the CND. Whether or not you have any issues with, are requiring they have a dedicated recycling coordinator for Newport Beach for their customers and the city, as is a point of contact, and the questions on the hauler restriction on the roadways and the additional safety equipment.
Yeah, I'll just finish up then. Okay, my comments would be that on questions, there are five questions. On questions one and three, I don't support going above and beyond the state mandated requirements. On questions two, four, five, I'm comfortable with it. And when it comes back for us for ordinance adoption and in the staff report, it'd be fantastic to know what is above and beyond state mandated requirements. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, do you have just one slide that has all the questions on the same slide?
No.
Okay. I'm going to go out to the public, then I'll bring it back, and I'll do a poll of each issue and just try to resolve this quick manner. Any comments from the public, including any of the haulers who want to address particularly concerning or agreeable suggestions?
Good afternoon, council members and city staff. My name is Chris Vanderstark, and I am speaking on behalf of Republic Services Recycling and Waste. I would like to thank you for your contribution to the community of Newport Beach. We appreciate all of your efforts. We want to inform you that we are in full support of what city staff has proposed today, and we will be here to provide support throughout the process if this is engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I wanted to point out, we often hear that study sessions are for studying, not for decision-making, yet obviously at many of the study sessions, you're asked to give direction to staff. I realize the items you hear at the study sessions will be coming back, for instance, this one coming back as an ordinance in the future, but I have noticed the ideas that you vote down in your straw polls tend not to come back. So this is kind of the final decision for those things. And the agenda really was informing the public and the haulers, I assume, that this was supposed to be a summary of new changes in state law. And I would think and would have hoped that at some point in the announcement for the meeting, it would have said that you are going to be making decisions here, and actually what the questions were that you were going to be asked. And I would wonder if some of the 32 other haulers besides Republic might have thoughts on these questions that would inform you and make a better choice when you're doing your straw poll. Having not seen the questions in advance, I haven't had time to think about them. I'm not as quick a thinker as you are. I do believe Mike perhaps did not make as clear as he should. His reason, I believe, for wanting each hauler to do all three things, I think clearly is to reduce the number of trucks operating in the city so that you don't have to have three coming to a facility where only one would do. I assume that's the reason, but I don't know, because that one hauler might have three different trucks for the three different waste streams. And the other thing I was intrigued by was the reference, which I think is a good thing, that the city staff is working with a bicycle and pedestrian safety committee, but I had not heard of that committee, and I'm wondering if that is a city staff committee? Is it a city council committee? Is it something completely different, county committee? I don't know who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Okay, bring it back to the dais. I'm going to set it up, and I'm going to state my own opinions as well, so we just... So this first one, direction to staff, is one of two or three slides, looks like it's one of three that have a request for action or some direction. So for myself, I'm going to say no to one, no to two, just require extra work for everyone, it can be changed, and require them to follow the law, and it's unilaterally revocable. So that's, I view it as pointless, more regulation. Could you go, next slide? No to three, no to four, and then five, I think with more details, I would support, and I would support mandating that rear-view sensors or cameras are installed, and mandating that mirrors are placed at the place that staff would suggest, as long as the costs are reasonable, maybe in lines with another city that you pointed out. That's me. Now, I'm not going to, now I'll just bring it back and just try to take a poll of my colleagues up here to see how they feel about everyone. So back to the first one. Please just by show a hand, and feel free to comment if you want to put a question in the queue. Show a hand if you support the first one. Okay, I see no support for that. Show a hand if you support the first one. Okay, I see no support for that. Show a hand if you want to support the second one regarding the terms of the agreement. I see majority of hands there. Yes, you may.
Can I just clarify on the first one? Clients with state mandated recycling programs in the first item? Oh, that was, oh, all right. Apologize. Okay.
Okay, so I saw a majority of hands shown for the second one. Onto the third one.
One moment. So the, the majority was Hurdman, Avery, Dixon, Piotr, and O'Neill? Did I miss anyone? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be that formal, do you mind?
It's good to have it in the record, though, just kind of, you know, how many people were on each one. It's more of a Brown Act issue.
You mean, we're not making a decision tonight, but you want to be, have us on the record as to what our decision is? That Brown Act problem?
Yeah, well, the Brown Act basically says...
I'm just trying to clarify it.
Yeah, if you're giving direction, then we should, we'd count, you know, what the majority is and who was in the majority, but you're not bound by it.
Yeah, it's a straw poll. I think just counting hands is more appropriate.
Okay, on to the third one, which Councilwoman Dixon just asked about, increased commercial hauler diversion standards. Please show hands if you're interested in supporting staff.
And just for clarification on this one, so the 65% requirement, that's mandatory for construction waste and debris, but it's 50% for all other types of raise of waste. So this is really getting at whether you want to increase it to 65% for everything.
Thank you.
Okay. And I, I just want to be clear. I, I just don't want to go above state mandate. That's...
That's what they're asking for.
Yeah, okay.
So this is a request to go, this is a question to see if we are interested in going above state mandate, to be clear. Am I correct, Mr. Sani?
Yes, with the caveat that we're already above state mandates for that current franchise because it's 55%.
Okay, so we're already doing...
A little bit more.
A little bit more than the state, which is shocking. Okay. Okay. Would anyone, does anyone want to raise their hand by showing, to support the increase? It looks like we'll stay above the state mandate at the current level. And then, does anyone want to show a hands for requiring haulers to have recycling coordinator?
May I make a comment? Thank you, Mayor. Is there a history of a problem with this? What is the need for this, Mike?
Basically, to, as we've gotten to the mandatory commercial recycling and mandatory organics recycling, it's more important for the haulers to do their due diligence and following up to make sure people are still putting, businesses are still putting things in the right bin. And there's always like a re-education, particularly in the restaurant industry because there's a lot of turnover. It's just, it's something that frankly is generally done in cities with only one hauler, where businesses have one person to call. That person is aware of what's going on in the community, and it's the one person that on a day-to-day basis is a contact for city staff. So the thought is if, and this isn't for the CND side because that's a little easier, but for the five or six haulers we're going to have that are doing all these commercial bins, they're gonna have, it would be a positive thing to have a dedicated person for each of these companies to, to do.
So we're not looking at 33 coordinators then?
No, it's...
All right.
Mike, before you go any further on that one, you're saying a recycling coordinator. I also heard you say you just want a name of a key person who's basically in charge of making sure that company is complying with the law.
Contact person.
Correct. And that, you know, the company dedicates adequate time and doesn't split them amongst six different cities. You know, if it's possible, say, a hauler only has five organics recycling accounts, it doesn't take a lot of extra time. But if a company is large and is like 50 organics recycling, they're going to have to do a lot of outreach and it's kind of a cost of doing business and have, have the time and have the...
Can I make one more comment? I understand that we're just doing straw voting here, but it's, it's difficult to make decisions on this. I'm hearing about this for the very first time. I would, before I make any decisions on this in the form of a resolution, I would really like to have some feedback from those individuals that we contract with now in terms of how realistic is all this? What's going to be the fiscal impact on their organizations in order to come in compliance with our city standards? Are we putting too much on them? You know, I understand there's laws that we have to come in compliance with, but I would appreciate some of that information before we're asked to make a final decision on this. Some feedback from the vendors that we contract with for trash service.
And part of the proposal, I think, that Mike's making is to meet with the haulers after kind of getting a feel from the council. So if that's a decision you'd like to push off until they have a chance to meet with the haulers and then bring back something, that's appropriate as well.
Okay.
Councilman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, specifically, first of all, I do agree with my colleague, Mr. Hurdman. Before we rule out anything, I'd kind of like to get a little bit more, hear a little bit more from the industry. But specifically regarding this recycling coordinator, is this, what is the problem that we currently have? What are we trying to solve? What is our current experience that's driving this request?
Frankly, that the haulers aren't doing enough outreach and aren't helping the businesses enough. When we contact them and say, why haven't you done organics recycling? You know, they've just got, they haven't got the time from the haulers or haulers really dedicated, some are better than others, to actually working through solutions. Because every restaurant's going to say, oh, our kitchen's too small to have separate bins and everything else. Well, it works in other places. The law says you have to have it. You need to kind of work through it, and it takes some time for the haulers to kind of make it, make it work. So it's, we're doing our best to make, really for the business community, to make sure that they have a contact that they call, and they're just not calling a general number at a large hauler and getting transferred around, but to have, to know that John Smith is the, their contact for Newport Beach, and city staff will develop a relationship with John Smith, too, that he, if he has an issue where something really won't work in a particular business, you know, he'll let us know. But, you know...
Maybe I'd just be, in addition to a recycling coordinator, I mean, I would just think you'd really want a dedicated contact person across the board on the, to represent the hauler. So you, so we can work with that person to get to...
Yeah, it's essentially the same thing. It's just a, you know, a title we use, that we could probably work up some language that they have, you know, somebody who, you know, and if they change assignments or something else, they, you know, they need to tell us who that is, and they have to have somebody who is willing to, you know, take that.
Right, in a position of responsibility. Okay.
I don't, I don't want to beat this to death. I just want to understand. You mentioned earlier that haulers are required to provide reports to the city, and you in turn are required, the city, I don't mean you, Mike, the city in turn is required to report to the state, correct, as a part of the legislation?
Correct.
All right. Would this coordinator help facilitate the reporting that's required by us?
Yes, and the person reporting would more than, quite possibly someone who is either assisting with the preparation of the monthly reports or is actually doing that, too.
Okay. Any more questions on how haulers should do their jobs and who they should hire?
You still have the final question. You have one more.
No, no, just on this one.
The mayor wanted to take a vote on this one.
Okay, all right. So with that said, this is question four, correct? Okay. Raise your hands if you support requiring haulers to have a recycling coordinator or learning more on the topic if you feel like we haven't heard enough. Okay, so it looks like we want to learn more about it and hear more.
That was Hurdman, Avery, O'Neill, Dixon, and, okay, not O'Neill, DeField and Dixon.
Okay, and so the last one, I'm gonna, we're looking at, I think we should change it. Let's bifurcate it. Let's add another one, if you will. The first one, I wanted to quickly see how you feel about restricting haulers from operating within 300 to 500 feet of high-track facilities during peak congestion periods. Let's do that one separately. And that would include schools, essentially?
Yes.
That peak congestion? Okay. So show a hands if you support restricting haulers for operating within those parameters. So that, that's unanimous, I said earlier. And then part two. Require the installation of additional safety equipment on, on the trucks that operate within the city of Newport Beach under those franchise agreements. Raise your hands if you support that. Okay, that's unanimous as well. Or Mr. Piotr? No, except for Mr. Piotr, that's unanimous. But please bring back what that, that means and perhaps even a cost idea, what it will cost them to comply with any restrictions, any requirements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muldoon, city council members. I'm Kim Brant, the Community Development Director. And the purpose of our presentation this, this afternoon is to give you an overview and an update where we are with regulating the city's short-term vacation rentals. And we are not asking for any direction or action this, this afternoon. We're just want to give you an update because summer has arrived and we are seeing our vacation rentals starting to be used on, on a regular basis. So in terms of background, we came to the city council last September after a many-month process of doing community engagement and reviewing the city's existing regulations. We came back to the city council and asked if, if the council was interested in making any amendments to the city's ordinances. And the direction at that time was, let's keep our existing ordinances in place, but rather focus on code enforcement. And more or less, let's enforce the codes we already have on the books. So with that direction, we have been working on code enforcement going into this summer season. But in terms of overall regulatory background, in 1992 was the first time that the city council put into the municipal code regulations regarding short-term or vacation rentals. And short-term is defined as 30 days or less of a consecutive occupancy of a property. It requires a short-term lodging permit. It also requires a business license, as well as the payment of transient occupancy tax or bed tax for any, as a result of any rental of the property. Then in 2004, the city council at that time made the decision that vacation rentals would not be allowed in the R1 zones, but they did go ahead and grandfather in the existing 212 properties that already had permits in, in the city. And so they were allowed to be continued to be used on a vacation, for vacation rentals indefinitely. So again, in order to get a short-term lodging permit today, you have to be in the correct residential zone. You have to obtain a short-term lodging permit and a business license, and you're required to pay the city's transient occupancy tax. And I would also want to note that if a property is located in a community association with homeowner regulations or CCNRs, that it's advisable for the property owner to check with their homeowners association to ensure or to make, to make certain that short-term or vacation rentals are allowed pursuant to their CCNRs.
We have a question from Councilman Hurdman.
Kim, could you just back up to the slide before? I'd like to see that grandfather date, please, once more. June 1st, 2004. Thank you.
So how many short-term lodging permits do we have in the city today? There are 120 in the R1 zone, and those are those grandfathered units that I was referring to. And so there's 212 grandfathered units. 120 have active permits, and 92 do not have active permits. So that leaves a balance of 100, 1,179 permits that are in our multifamily zones. And those zones are mostly on Balboa Island, Corona del Mar, and the Balboa Peninsula. So we have almost 1,300 active permits today. And it's important to note that they do generate a significant amount of bed tax or TOT. In the last fiscal year, they generated $2.7 million, which represents about 10% of our total TOT that we received last year. So where are the short-term rentals allowed? So this exhibit in the golden rod color shows the zones where you could get a vacation rental legally with, with the proper permits. And then these little purple dots are the 212 grandfathered R1 or single-family properties. So this is a blow-up of Peninsula Point. And again, the goldish color are the multifamily areas or multifamily zones. And then the purple are those individual, single-family lots that were grandfathered in back in 2004.
Yes, I'm sorry, excuse me. Councilman Dixon?
Just a quick question. There are also a cap on the permits for R1, but there is no limit on the permit for multifamily?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So this is an exhibit that takes the allowed zoning, and so you see the golden, which again is the multifamily zoning. The purple are those grandfathered R1 zones. And then those little green icons are the actual active permits. And so this is just a blow-up of Peninsula Point. And this is a blow-up of Central Balboa. So as you can see in this area, it's more predominantly multifamily zoned, and of course, quite a number of active permits. And then again, the purple are the grandfathered zones, our grandfathered properties. So what we've done since last year is we've updated our website. We think it's a whole lot more user-friendly. We have, this is not an interactive slide, but you just push this button here, apply for a permit, file a complaint, search for an address, and the rules to remember in terms of what the city's codes require if you're going to be operating a short-term lodging. So it's much more user-friendly. And what the website includes is an interactive map that is showing you where you can plug in an address, and it'll tell you whether or not short-term lodging is allowed on the property, whether there's a permit on the property, and whether short-term lodging is prohibited on the property.
We have a question from Councilman...
Yes.
Hurdman?
Kim, can you take us back to that map and show us the flower streets in Corona del Mar?
I cannot because these are not, I don't, I only focus on the peninsula.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So in conclusion, our, we do have the ability to have very real-time information, not only for people interested in doing vacation rentals on their home, but also for neighbors wondering whether or not a property is being used for a vacation rental. So what has changed in the last few years is, is the internet and the success of the online hosting platforms such as Airbnb, Flip, FlipKey or HomeAway, I'm sorry, FlipKey, and then VBRO, VRBO, which is also HomeAway. I'm getting my letters mixed up. And it's been very difficult for the city to regulate these online businesses because they are in the, on, on the cloud, out in the internet world, and they don't have a brick and mortar presence here in the city. As many of you know, we do have longstanding property management companies in the community who have a very good working relationship with city staff in terms of managing vacation rentals. So with the onset and the success of these online businesses, it's been very difficult for the city to get any type of relationship with these operators and so that they recognize and help the city enforce its own, enforce our regulations. So you, this has been in the news quite a bit in terms of Airbnb with different cities throughout the nation trying to come to terms with Airbnb and then HomeAway and the larger players. And the most recent decision came out of, well, it's actually, I'm sorry, a settlement agreement between Airbnb, HomeAway, and the city of San Francisco that came out in May... agreement between Airbnb, HomeAway, and the city of San Francisco that came out in May with the determination that the city is ultimately responsible for enforcing its regulations. But the, both HomeAway and Airbnb were agreeing to share their host information with the city of San Francisco, which enabled, then would enable the city of San Francisco to follow up. And I'm actually very happy to say that we have had some recent discussions with HomeAway, who has indicated a willingness to cooperate and collaborate with the city. And we just received a letter today from HomeAway indicating their willingness to share their listings with the city, to require that our permit numbers be put into the description on the various listings of properties, and again, share their listing information with the city on a monthly basis. So, we will follow up with them and hopefully get a cooperative agreement in place. But we're very pleased that they are willing to share their information with the city that will help our enforcement effort.
Thank you, Ms. Brandt. Ms. Dixon.
Have we heard from Airbnb?
We have not.
Are we going to talk to them?
Well, I think we've had previous discussions with them in terms of expressing the same desire, having our permit number included in the rental information, sharing their information to us. But this was all pre the San Francisco decision. So, I think once we have an agreement in place with HomeAway, we'll then reach out to Airbnb.
Okay. That's a good idea. Okay, good.
So, what we've done for this summer is that the city has hired a firm called Host Compliance, which is assisting staff in reviewing the online listings. They're basically going through and reviewing everything that's out there on the Internet and providing weekly reports to the city, which is, and they have a much better capability to review that information than we do.
Do they, I'm sorry, do they cross-reference the report of the advertised address with those that are registered with us? Or do we have to do that work?
So, we have information in terms of our permit listings, but they are not necessarily knowing what the addresses are, but they're giving us what they believe what the addresses are. And so, they're filtering through the information. Because what's happened with the online descriptions is the addresses are not posted on the Internet. So, that's why it's been so difficult for the city staff to go through and to find out whether or not they have the proper licenses. So, they're giving us what they believe are the questionable listings, and then we're drilling down further and then, and doing the cross-checking to see whether or not it is a valid listing or not. And so, but they're working with us because they also have the listing of our permitted properties as well.
And do those addresses, eventually after we determine where the address actually is, is it foreseeable that we'll have less of these flagged locations because we'll be cracking down, cramping whatever, on the bad actors? Or what's gonna, what do you foresee happening?
Well, we're hoping so. We're already having some success, and I have some numbers to share with you in terms of, the word is getting out, the city is taking a proactive code enforcement effort this summer to ensure that all the rentals are properly permitted. And so far, we've, we're only a few weeks into it, and so, we'll know a lot more by the end of the summer so we can do some trend analysis. It's a little early still at this point.
Thank you. A question from Councilman Hurdman.
Kim, you're always a step ahead of me, but I just had a thought sitting here about this permit number. What about the city requiring someone like myself, who has rental property in the city, to provide you with proof that I have put the permit number on whatever electronic website I'm using to advertise my rental? You don't have to respond to it, it's just an idea. All right?
All right, thank you.
Councilman Avery.
Well, would there ever be a time when the grandfathered homes expire, or they just, their property right, it just continues on? It never goes away?
So, the way the code is written, unless they're, they do something, that we would cause the city to revoke their permit in terms of being a bad actor, not complying with the city's codes, there isn't anything that makes their permit, the grandfathered aspect to go away. But again, these permits are annual permits, and but, that the property owner comes back on an annual basis to renew, but we only revoke if there's a problem in terms of not complying with the city's codes. So, what we're doing with these questionable listings that Host Compliance is providing with us is we're, we are fine-tuning whether or not the property is in the correct location. If yes, do we have a permit in place? Is there a business license in place? If not, is the use of the property for vacation rentals then occurring, then it has to stop? And then, the property owner would be responsible for paying fines and remitting the bed tax back to the city. So, what we've done to date, and this has started in late May, so we're only looking about five weeks of information. In the R1 zone, so again, that's the single-family zone, and these are properties that are not grandfathered in, we've been provided 108 questionable listings. Of the 108, 57 citations have been issued, and 78 of those properties have brought in, have been brought into code compliance. So, that's of, as of now. In the multifamily zones, we've received 103 questionable listings. And again, in the multifamily zones, short-term rentals are allowed, but they have to have the proper permits. We, of those, 23, we've had to send notices out, and we still have another 53 listings that we're reviewing. So, the balance between 53, 23, and 103 are those that we felt were, we were able to identify that there was not a problem. So, for the next steps going forward this summer, we're going to continue to follow up on the leads provided by Host Compliance. We're going to pursue an agreement with HomeAway. And we'll return back to you at the end of the, at the end of the summer, or before the end of the year, to review the success of this proactive enforcement program over the year in terms of the number of properties brought into compliance, the amount of transient occupancy tax that was collected, that would not have otherwise been collected through this process, and the cost of us doing the proactive program. And with that, I'll take any other questions.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil.
Just one on the slide that came right before this one. What does it mean in this context for 78 rentals to have been brought into code compliance?
So, so, we had 108 properties that we're reviewing. So, we normally send out a notice of violation before we, before we issue a citation. And so, of the 108, 78 have already stopped operating their vacation rentals. And then, they'll have to pay back taxes to the city in terms of business license and any bed tax that has not been paid.
And how do we find out how much they would owe for bed tax?
So, believe it or not, people can be very forthright in giving that information to us. And so, finance will work with them, and we can also look at their listings, and we can get a sense of the property, the time the property's been advertised. And perhaps we can get some cooperation with the, with the online hosting company, too.
Thank you.
Councilman Hurdman.
Thank you, Mayor. Kim, I was approached over the weekend by a couple of people who have short-term rentals right next door to them. All right? I think what I'm going to ask you becomes a police issue, but my, and also, these are short-term rentals. One of the gentlemen that I talked to had a lot of complaints about the place next door to him, that's a short-term rental and very disruptive tenants that the owner continues to rent to. All right? I understand that his, the course he should take is to call the police department, make complaint, the police department comes out. What kind of dialogue or communication goes on between the police department and our code enforcement in a case like this where a landlord continually rents to disruptive parties?
So, that's an excellent question, Councilmember Hurdman. And that was something that, a better coordination between code enforcement and police department, the police department started last summer where there is reporting on the various loud, unruly gathering citations that were issued over the past week, or a disturbance activity citation. And so, they're correlating them now back to the short-term rental properties. And if we see a pattern that's, that isn't being stopped, then we have the ability to revoke the short-term rental.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions to follow up on that. You had on your slide that there is a button for people to file or report a complaint. Do you have any statistics on that so far, since that's been on the website? How many complaints are being generated?
According to our Monique Navarre, our revenue supervisor, it's one to two a week.
And then, going to follow up on Mr. Hurdman's question, so our, how do we, how does code enforcement deal with that? And I remember in our prior public sessions that we were going to have, due to, as a result of the increased revenues because of the revenue collection that we're getting, we would have additional resources for code enforcement. Are we dedicating those resources?
So, we have, we have in finance, so this is a multi-department endeavor. I neglected to say that in the beginning. This involves the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, finance, the police department, as well as the community development. So, within the finance department, there is a part-time person that helps with looking through, you know, the online listings and providing support now to the information that's coming in from Host Compliance that is devoting their efforts towards short-term rentals. And then, in the code enforcement division, they are focusing on the properties that are in the R1 zones that are, that are not operate, that can't be operating regardless if they have a permit or not. So, we've divvied up the different arms of code enforcement, and we're, we're just, at this time, making do with the staff resources that we have. And as the information's coming in, let's say, from Host Compliance, we may not be able to take care of everything within one week or two weeks, but we'll have that list, and we'll continue to work on it throughout the course of the summer, and then we'll see where we're at. Again, that'll be part of our final assessment when we come back to you before the end of the year.
Okay, just a couple more follow-up questions. Mr. Hurdman made a good suggestion. I've heard this from other property management company representatives or owners, that they're already going beyond what the city requires in terms of how they manage their properties. And I've noticed, and they are confirming, that these property management companies are actually affiliating now, or have some, they list their properties on VRBO or these other online. So, I think it would, it's almost kind of an easy step, that they already have a city permit, and so, to facilitate that with the online listing company would be something that they're already doing. It would be a positive step forward. Last year, when we had these discussions also, it was discussed, and we decided not to follow up on this point, but if an R1 permit is not utilized over a period of time to be determined by multiple years, do you see any reason to make a change in that, or to let them expire, go away, disappear?
Well, again, that's a council decision, whether or not you would want that to occur. And I think that that's a whole discussion unto itself.
Okay, then let me ask the question another way. Of the 100 and, how many are there? There, I got 120 active and the 92 inactive. How long, what is the average period of inactivity? Do we know that?
No, I don't know that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Avery.
Wonderful, concise report, as usual. And all's I can say is, I wish you were bringing this back to us, this back to us in the fall.
Thank you. We've seen no other comments, public comments on this item.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is George Schroeder, and I'm a 29-year resident. I bought my duplex 1987, so when I first moved here, I moved into an R2 area. So, I became a landlord and a property owner, property manager. I have a few other properties I manage down here now. I just want to say on those short-term rentals, I think the city is doing a very good job. I was here in 2004, actually, at the old city hall, when they looked at changing where they would allow the short-term rentals at. And there was a lot of concerned property owners because they had beach properties primarily where they were doing short-term. So, it kind of went back and forth, and there was a lot of discussion. They said, they just said, well, we're not going to allow it anymore. And then, there was a lot of, ask and happen here, discussion back and forth. And people said, I bought my property for that income, and that's how I use it. So, they kind of ended up where, well, if you have a permit now, we'll let you continue to have a permit. Okay? And all of the people that were here were people who were using it, okay? And I have to believe, at the time, it's 2016 now, if you told people your permits in the R1 zones are going to grandfather out in 2036, I don't think a lot of people would get too excited. Okay? So, what we should have done in 2004 is told them that you have 20 years. So, if you made plans, if you got a 30-year loan, you have 20 years. Okay? Because, and the reason I say this is if you buy a nice home at Peninsula Point where it's primarily, you know, it's all R1, people buy homes for three, four million dollars down there, and there's a property next door to you, and if there's a short-term operator, and if they don't do a good job, if they bring a group in, 10 people in, and then, you know, they want to use the patio at night, have a barbecue, and they're just there for a week's vacation to have a good time, those lots are small. You do not have the ability to enjoy your home in a single-family resident area. Okay? And then, also, we have a lot of other areas, like, it's good that we have our short-term because if not, we would have Airbnb up in, you know, Harbor Ridge and anywhere else, where like they have in Los Angeles, everywhere else, where just have people doing it all over. And it's very disruptive. So, I think it was a good question from Councilman Avery, you know, should we possibly look at this? So, I think council should look at it. And I also think it was a good point by Councilman Dixon, that at the time, a bunch of people were here saying, look, we have these and we use it. Well, if people had it and they don't use it, then I think if they've been inactive for five years, they should just expire in the R1 areas. Okay? And those are my thoughts, as a person who was here at the time, who owns R2 property and who does, and I'm in the rental business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schroeder. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. Regarding the potential cooperative agreement with the HomeAway company, that sounded like very good news for simplifying the administration of this. I was just curious, since HomeAway is presumably a for-profit business, if their motivation for doing this is they just want to be a good corporate citizen, or as part of the agreement, we would be offering to pay them some amount per cooperation that they're making with us? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Would the city give any consideration to HomeAway?
They didn't propose that in their letter, so we wouldn't propose it in response.
Thank you. All right, back to the dais. Mayor Potem Duffield.
Real fast, I just wanted to comment about all the hard work the staff has done and compliment them. It's truly, since last year, you guys, it seems to me from your report, you've done a bang-up job. And I, I know that's got to be a lot of work coordinating, coordinating everybody. And property tax is our number-one source of income, and so, making our property owners happy is important, and keeping the values of the properties up. And so, you should be proud of yourselves for doing that. You're directly relating to helping Newport Beach be all it can be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Thank you, staff. This is the final presentation from staff before we enter a closed session.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, as we invite the folks up for July 4th, I need to warn them that our time is tight.
Good afternoon, and your advisement is noted, Mr. City Manager. I'm John Delos, your Chief of Police, and we will be giving a brief, concise, and comprehensive 4th of July update briefing. This is very similar to what we've brought to you in past years, and really what this is, the thumbnail sketch of our planning for the is a thumbnail sketch of our planning for the 4th of July, and also the days leading up, and what we can expect to see on the 4th of July. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Dennis Burch, you know, who is our Patrol and Traffic Division Commander. He is also the Incident Commander for the 4th of July holiday deployment. With that, Deputy Chief Burch.
Thanks, and thanks for having me here today, and I will try to keep it short. Just an overview on the 4th of July this year, in broad strokes, it's going to look very familiar to years past. And though we continue to make adjustments and fine-tune what we do based on feedback from, that we get from the community and our own observations, and this year is no different. One of the main adjustments and fine-tuning pieces that we're going to do this year was our approach to fireworks, and we heard back from the community pretty, pretty significantly last year in our own observations about fireworks, and I'll talk about that a little bit in a minute. But generally speaking, as always is the case, our mission is to protect life and property, maintain peace and order. That second one on the 4th of July is obviously the big one for us out there, and we do that through presence to ensure public safety and enforce laws to do that. And one of the goals, starting back in 2010, when we changed our approach to the 4th of July, was to maintain and establish a family-friendly environment down there on the peninsula. And we've done that, and we have been doing that through engagement, education, prevention, and enforcement in, in the areas of, in what we're doing. And the big goal there for us was to normalize activity in West Newport, and that was feedback from the community and the council at the time, in the areas, particularly in the center of gravity for some of the issues we had down there were parties, fireworks, and alcohol. And so we're out working to engage our community, educate our community about the issues we have surrounding those, those three issues, particularly parties and fireworks. And so we have a beefed-up patrol deployment this weekend through Monday to do that. If we see some parties that are starting up this weekend, we will get out and talk to them early, and have that education piece early and enforcement as needed. We also have a tip line for our community, and I got Mr. Schroeder before the meeting, giving me a little bit of feedback about who and where to expect some issues. We're taking that on our tip line, and we're using our beefed-up deployment this weekend to go out and meet with those folks that we expect to be problems, or may be problems, or the community expects to be problems, and we're going to just talk to them, engage them, educate them about what we're doing, what our experiences are, and how they can be successful on the 4th of July. And then he talked a little bit about the short-term rentals here with Ms. Brant. We have a good partnership with our brick-and-mortar rental companies here, and they take quick and decisive, decisive action against loud and unruly parties, and evict right on the spot for us on the 4th and the weekends leading up to it. So they've been fantastic partners with us, and we look forward to continuing that partnership. Terms of prevention, this year, we're very interested to see some of the results of some new stuff that we've been doing, and we haven't really done this before. And I don't think it's really been done before that I know of. We've taken a proactive approach to fireworks, and again, we heard from the community about fireworks and the big explosive-type skyrockets that were going off last year. And so we had our detectives do several operations leading up to the 4th and into the 4th with the, the source of these big fireworks, illegal fireworks, not the safe and sane stuff that you see out there. And to date, we've had eight arrests of these operators and seized over 1,000 pounds of these skyrocket explosive devices to this point. Our partners in Costa Mesa have jumped on board, and they're also doing some of those things. So we're very interested to see what the results of, of those are to our community and see if that enhances our, our 4th of July experience down on, on West Newport. Again, we have a tip line that will be up. I think we're putting out a press release on that and putting out on that on our social media to get early feedback from our neighbors and see if we can't get into and engage early, be proactive with those people. That might be potential problems and have them get on board with where we'd like to be for the 4th of July. Terms of normalizing West Newport activity, we started back in 2010 with this process. This year, it starts a three-year window where we just have one-day holidays, not the three-day weekends that we've experienced the last couple of years. Seems like it's been a while, so we want to take advantage of these one-day opportunities and really put the press on changing behavior down there, and hopefully just have a very busy holiday weekend, much like Memorial Day and Labor Day. That's our goal with these next three years, is really to get out there, the fireworks, the small stuff, the quality-of-life stuff, and, you know, in particular, the specific focused areas, you know, not the big, large, broad-stroke stuff that we've done in the past. The parties, we think, the Lugo ordinance that was enacted in 2011 had a big impact on that, and we hope this fireworks initiative that we've done also has a similar impact for us.
Quick question from Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you for, for your good presentation, and I appreciate all the proactive work you're doing. My memory from last year is all the good work you've just described, but the opportunistic fireworks that go off individually, and you can't call the police, it's already, you can't find these people, they're gone. I mean, I see it in my own neighborhood, and the people who set them off are gone, and, you know, they disappear. And that I remember from last year was a really significant problem because it was going on for hours.
Yeah, and that's what we hope, some of this proactive stuff that we've done, getting out in front of it early, educating people that might be having some of the safe and sane fireworks, you know, on Saturday and Sunday and Monday, getting in front of that then to mitigate the problems on the 4th, going to the source of these fireworks and the big illegal fireworks. We hope that has a calming effect on it. And then we are making it a point of emphasis for our folks, you know, much like alcohol and parties have been in years past, fireworks are highlighted and they're number one for us this year to, to be right up there.
I just don't know if the target user is listening to your news releases.
No, but they will listen to officers that show up to their house and say hello and give them a friendly reminder, I believe. West Newport, in particular, Safety Enhancement Zone is, is an area of focus for us. It's not the only focus for us. It's denoted by 32nd Street, 54th Street, Coast Highway, Newport Boulevard. Fines for offense violations in this area are triple, and I think we're all pretty familiar with that. I won't spend much time there. Our deployment for this year, much like in years past, we have the mounted, it's been a big hit with the community. We've got outside help from Irvine, Orange, Brea, California Highway Patrol, and Orange County Sheriff's Department to help us with our jail booking operations, as we expect a, a large influx of prisoners for the 4th, as we do every year. Highlights, and I mentioned, are pre-4th of July seizures and detective operations and efforts with the, the community in, in terms of early engagement and education. It's a Tuesday holiday, that's the first of the three, you know, single-day holidays, so I think that's a highlight for us and an opportunity for us to, to make a difference. And then we have enhanced deployment Friday through Monday, and we will be using Marina Park facility, so we'll have a presence down there even when we're taking a break. We'll, we'll be down there using that beautiful facility. Enforcement data, you can see there some of the numbers, they've been going down steadily over the years. The disturbance advisement cards that Ms. Brant talked about, last year we did 24 of those versus 12 and, and 15, and we haven't had any loud and unruly gathering violations in the last two years, and I think the message has gotten out on that. And there's the trend line, since the Safety Enhancement Zone has been established in terms of citations, and that's been a downward trend over the last 14 years. And we're seeing that with arrests trending down generally with a spike in '08, but generally our arrests have been down, and anecdotally, along with statistically, we've been seeing an act, a downward trend in, in our activity. And hopefully this year, we, we have some of the same, and hopefully the weather cooperates with us. But that's been, that's been our experience to date so far. And of course, we've got our social media and information going out to the community along with our press releases and our tip line, in all the usual places for us, and I'll be happy to take any of your questions at this time.
Councilman Neal.
Did you say that over 1,000 pounds of fireworks have been seized already?
Correct.
That's a lot. Thanks.
The question is, what do we do with these fireworks? They are, these, these are dangerous explosives, they really are. And so what we had to do is, is coordinate with the Orange County Bomb Squad, and there is a locker specifically to store these in up at the county, rather than putting them in the police evidence room, Mr. Kip. So I understand that they're with professionals.
Management pieces.
These fireworks are illegal in other cities, correct?
Yes. They're illegal in the state to possess.
I'm sorry, say it again?
They're illegal to possess in the state.
Oh, they are?
They're illegal by statute, yes.
Okay, all fireworks?
These particular fireworks.
Oh, these particular ones, okay.
Not the safe and sane stuff that you see maybe.
Okay, that's why I was confused.
Yeah, these are the, the bigger, to the chief's point, explosive devices.
Okay, thank you. Any public, any comments from the public?
I know you guys are in a hurry, so I just want to briefly say how much the West Newport Beach residents appreciate everything that this city staff, the police, and Parks, Recreation and Department have done just to actually take this thing and turn it around, because it was the absolute worst, and it was just the worst day of the year, and now it's fantastic, and I just can't say enough good things. So I just want to publicly, publicly thank all of them on behalf of the residents in West Newport Beach. And also, it's helping to save a lot of the city budget too, because whatever we're spending this year, I know our budget in 2005 was like 160 million, now it's 308, okay? So the cost, whatever it is to have this extra police here, we had to have the kind of police we had to have back in the old days, that cost would be way up, so it's a very good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. See no other publics on this item, no other public comments on this item? Councilwoman Dixon.
I just want to echo Mr. Schroeder. I just want to thank you, our fine men and women in blue, thank you for all the hard work and concentrated activity that you're going to be placing on the peninsula on the 4th of July. Very grateful, and best wishes for a safe and sane 4th of July. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Before we go further, Jonathan, were you going to do a little bit about recreation programs? Okay, so we have a tiny bit more, just the fun stuff.
Thank you all. Be real quick, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, thank you for your time. We do have two great festivals and parades going on this weekend in the city as well. The first is the 7th Annual 4th of July Is For Families Event, taking place at the Balboa Peninsula. It starts at 36th Street with a bike parade and finishes up at Channel Place Park. We expect about 1,000 people at that event, so it's very well-attended, very community-based. People walk, ride bikes, decorate beach cruisers, tricycles, things like that, so it's really a fun event for kids of all ages. Once they get to Channel Place Park, we start a celebration there as well with the great food, prizes, games, carnival activities. As you'll see in a photo coming up, there's a, a big tug-of-war competition, as well as an inflatable obstacle course for, for all the people and kids to enjoy as well. These events are made possible by partnerships and joint collaboration with members of the community. This is a community-based foundation and committee from, from surrounding residents and stuff interested in this event. Craig Batley, Sharon Bowles, Nikolai Glazer, Cindy Kohler, Jim Miller, Lori Morris make up that committee and work very close with the city staff to put on this event. Here you can see some photos of the tug-of-war I was talking about, the giant inflatable obstacle course. Kids' face painting is a, a huge hit as well, and, and the decorated tricycles and, and 4th of July attire is a must as well. The second event we have going on is our 45th Annual this year, Mariners Park Independence Day Parade and Celebration. This is a larger-scale event that takes place at Commodore and Mariners Drive. It starts with a parade, follows a similar format, beginning at 10:30. We expect about 3,000 people showing up to this. They have a car sponsor and a grand marshal of this parade and such, so it is, it is quite the extravaganza and, and celebration that concludes at Mariners Park. Similar activities, we do a lot of fun carnival games and great food and stuff for families to enjoy all the way around and across the park, so it's an excellent celebration. This too is made possible by, there's some pictures there, decorated wagons and, and kids at the giveaway table getting flags and bags and things like that. You can walk, ride bikes. We have, I think last year, old military vehicles that made an appearance and were a huge hit and things like that as well, so. Heather Scheck, Alice Rocheberger, and Jennifer Garcia are three of the community members that we work with to put this event on, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the entire Mariners Elementary School Foundation that helps us put this great event on. They use a, a large team of volunteers to, to really come together and, and make this event what it is, so a, a large thank you to that organization for their work with us, with city staff and the Recreation and Senior Services Department to make this, this event a reality. While I'm saying thank yous, I do want to extend a, a large thank you to the Police Department and Fire Department for all they do on this day for us. They are very busy, as you just saw on the slides previously, but they are always there with the police motos or the fire engine to start the parades. I think the proud parade route rumor is that the chief might be driving the classic car on Balboa in the 4th Is For Families Parade, so we'll look out for that. But a, a true and sincere thank you goes out to them for being here and still making our parade and our event as great as it is, even though they are so busy. So without any questions, you all are certainly welcome to attend. I know some of you are, but I would like to extend that invitation as well.
Thank you. I don't see any question at this time. Any public comments on this item? Or the other? All right, thank you so much. And I, I believe I will be at the Mariners Parade, and then there's also an event at, I found a blank here. Go ahead, Dave. American Legion, yes, thank you, sir. American Legion event that I'll be in as well. Public, public comments on agenda, non-agenda items, please come forward. Mr. Harp.
All right, thank you, Mayor Muldoon. The city council adjourned to closed session to discuss items for AMB, including conference with legal counsel regarding three items of existing litigation, two of which are entitled Paul Mathias versus City of Newport Beach, and the other one's Friends of the Fire Rings versus South Coast Air Quality Management District and Newport Beach. And the final item is to meet with labor negotiators, including Dave Kip, the city manager, Carol Jacobs, the Assistant City Manager Barbara Salvini, the Human Resources Director, and Peter Brown, who are the negotiators, to discuss negotiations with the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Life Guards and Newport Beach Police Association. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at recess until the 7 o'clock regular meeting. Thank you. We're at recess until the 7 o'clock regular meeting. Thank you for your patience. I now call to order the June 27, 2017 regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. There is no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. At this time, Mayor Pro Tem Duffield will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilman Avery will lead us in invocation.
Let us have the presence of mind, always see the great bounty around us, blessed to live in this city.
Thank you. Councilman Avery. Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach encourages and welcomes community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. City council announcements and items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real briefly, I'd like to start by saying happy birthday to my little girl. Yep. And then we last, let's see, about a week, week and a half ago, attended the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce Open House. Their facilities are fantastic. I hope everyone has the opportunity to go take a look. My wife and I also attended the Tip a Cop event where the, our police raised thousands of dollars for the Special Olympics, which was, it's a great cause every year. I hope next year, anyone who didn't make it will be able to make it. I'll defer to Councilmember Dixon on the trolley preview, but I did attend. And then the Staff Appreciation Lunch, top-notch job to everyone, and I think the emcees, Rob Houston and John Lewis, did a great job as well. And then, coming up next week, one thing I just want to remind everyone, July 6th, it will be three years since we lost Ben Carlson. It is not something that any one of us have forgotten or will ever forget, and I just wanted to remind everyone as you're about to start celebrating the Fourth, that next week, we also have something else to remember. And then, of course, July 4th is Monday, so I wish, or Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday is July 4th, so I wish everyone a safe and sane July 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Piattar? This is Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Councilmember O'Neill, for mentioning an exciting event and activity that we have on the Balboa Peninsula, or Balboa Peninsula Trolley, that was launched two weekends ago. And let me just tell you, the reception has, and the experience is fun. And for those listening here in our council chambers and at home, please come experience the splendors of the trolley. It is fascinating, as I've ridden the trolley now a number of times, the people are so happy. It's just a fun experience to be riding the peninsula and getting on and off, parking for free, and getting on and off, and to experience the many opportunities and amenities on our peninsula. A few numbers. So for two full weekends, we have had a total of 3,3158 passengers, an average of about 790 per day. Remember, it's Saturday and Sunday, the last two weekends. An average of 113 passengers per hour, exceeding our grant from OCTA criteria of 21 passengers, 24 passengers per hour. So the response has really been really terrific. And the peak hours are between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m., and the popular stops are at the Hoag Lot, where the free parking is available, and Balboa Village. And the Catalina Flyer is promoting trolley on their web, the trolley on their website, and that's bringing people from parking down on the peninsula in the crowded lots and parking up at Hoag. Just a couple of thoughts. As I said, the people are happy on the trolley because they are experiencing our peninsula, our beaches, and our restaurants and store offerings in a way that they never had. For example, last weekend, I was talking with three women from Omaha, Nebraska, who have rented here before, but they have never, they, in the 20th Street Newport Pier area, and they'd never been down to Balboa Village because they could never move a car down there. And it was just, they were so excited. They thought this trolley has been going on every day, and I was telling them it just was starting. They said, oh, it's just fantastic. And that's really typical of the response. There is a complaint, but I think staff is dealing with that very well, is finding out where the Hoag parking lot is. The signs were kind of small and hard to find. So once people find the lot, they get on the trolley, and they're happy. And I've talked with each of the bus drivers that I've met, and they have vouched for the same. Thank you, Councilmember O'Neill, for being at the media event. It was great. It's gotten a lot of publicity. The merchants are really thrilled, because just as I gave that example, people are leaving one part of the peninsula, going down to the Balboa Village, taking the ferry over to Balboa Island and coming back. And just the movement of people is really been facilitated in a way that we've never done that before. So please enjoy the trolley. It'll be every weekend through Labor Day weekend, and including the July 4th, and I think we're also looking into Labor Day itself, but we'll worry about that in a few weeks. Special thanks to, again, to the Balboa Village Merchants Association and the Balboa Village Advisory Committee of Residents, and thanks to OCTA. This is revenue tax dollars coming back to us that we pay in our property taxes to OCTA, coming back to our community to help our businesses and be successful, economically successful, and our residents enjoy the pleasures of the peninsula. So, thank you for indulging me and talking about that. A couple other announcements. Staff Appreciation Luncheon is always a wonderful event to congratulate and show appreciation to our hard-working staff. So thank you, Human Resources and the committee that put all that together. This week, we may have approved the budget last meeting, but we still have a finance committee that loves to meet and always has a full agenda, so we will be meeting this Thursday in the city civic center and upstairs in the Crystal Cove Conference Room at 3:00 p.m. If anyone would like to join us, you are welcome. So I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman?
Just a couple of, couple of things. I attended the Boys and Girls Club Leadership Breakfast. Really nice event, and very proud to represent the city that morning. And then I, too, participated in the City Employee Appreciation Lunch. My job was to keep Brad and Will supplied with hot dogs and hamburgers and on the serving line, but it was a fun afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery?
After the last Harvard Commission meeting, I am, along with Councilman Duffield, we went and had a dinner with the rest of the commission for Doug West, and he, to me, was one of the special people on the Harvard Commission. And he, after seven years, he's on the commission, he left a little early to go back to his home on the East Coast, but he'll be out here occasionally. But it was tough to see him go, you know. He really got our RGP permit through, that's for dredging, which was a huge effort, and he put all his skills as a, as a top-flight corporate attorney retired to work on that endeavor and got it done. And he also produced the guide to Newport Harbor. More than that, what he brought to the commission was just an extraordinary amount of common sense and ability to size something up and be concise about sort of what it was, and that really helped us as a body to move things forward. So it was a pleasure to go to that. I also went to the Employee Appreciation Lunch and was absolutely, there was something about it, I guess, just seeing all the faces, you know, the totality, and I know there are many employees that weren't there for a variety of reasons, like they had work to do and essential functions to keep rolling, but it's an extraordinary, extraordinary town with great people, and we're, I think, I feel honored to represent them in the capacity that I do. The only thing I had a tough time doing was being under Barbara Salvini's control and getting the buns set up in the right way, and the hot dog buns and the hamburger buns. And Jeff was bringing them in, and it was borderline kind of a Lucy show, you know? The line kept going, but it was a lot of fun. And I didn't, wasn't able to attend the trolley opening. I wanted to support Diane, but I did send her a text, because the very next day, without planning on it, so I can't take credit for that, but my new bride and I found ourselves walking around Balboa. It, I don't know what it was, 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning, and the trolley literally just went right by us at the pier. And we said, "The trolley?" And we ran up to it, we hopped on, and there were about seven or eight people onboard, which I thought was pretty extraordinary. And there was this young woman, and she was just, she was putting on her makeup at the time, but she was talking nonstop about what a great thing the trolley was. And we concurred, and we rode it up the peninsula, and some people were actually waving on the street. And we got off at 15th Street to go to the Stuffed Surfer, but as everybody knows, except us, the Stuffed Surfer hasn't been operating since January, so we're really disappointed. But then, it all turned out well, because we went to the Lighthouse Cafe for breakfast, and that was terrific. So, and then briefly today, I, I was, I had, I was in a captive situation with our new harbor master for about 45 minutes, a little longer, maybe. And I'll tell you, I have just got such confidence, you know, about the future with Dennis Durgan helping us get the ball rolling. It's extraordinary how he's embraced it and his capacity for understanding every facet of it. So it's really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield?
We didn't choreograph this.
Yes, I got a few slides. I wanted to touch base back on an item that was mentioned at one of the last council meetings. I don't think we did give this enough justice. I missed this event, but I talked to my staff, and we did the first underwater cleanup of the harbor, real quickly, a couple of weekends ago. And if I can embellish just a couple of minutes, Mr. Duffield?
Sure, sure.
Staging area, but the key to this is what I didn't know was, our emcee of the event was Mayor Pro Tem Duffield, and he had a great items here. So I got some slides, if you would mind going through and telling us about it.
Okay, well, this actually is the first annual. Who would have ever thought there's trash at the bottom of the bay? You can't see it, so you don't really think it's there, but I got to tell you, the 100 volunteers and at least 70-plus volunteer divers spent an hour and a half on the bottom of the bay in a very, very small area, about the size of a potato chip in comparison to the harbor, but found upwards of 1,000 pounds of trash, furniture, bikes, cans, bottles, everything. You put it on the dock, and octopuses are flying out of these bottles and making their way back to the bay. And I had no idea there was so much stuff. Now, this is underneath the marinas, so this isn't out in the middle of the channel. But we want to make this an annual event. You can see how much trash is there, and all kinds. The most exotic trash that was found, I don't know if you call it trash, there was a gun in a holster at the bottom of the bay, which caused wreak and havoc, and people, so anyway, the law enforcement had to be called in and come down there, and so on and so forth. So it's kind of exciting, if you will. You can see the stats here. It's crazy. For the first one, 1,100 pounds of trash from the bottom of the harbor, and we look forward to doing it again, thanks to the Balboa Bay Club, who we fed these folks in the morning. These are our sponsors. And then we fed them a really great lunch, and, you know, they did it all as a volunteer thing, and we, the organization of it all was the brainchild of Billy Dutton and co-founder Melinda Williams. So my hat's off to them. Help Your Harbor is the, is the organization that we started three, four years ago, picking up trash on the top of the bay. This is the first underwater one. So, it worked out great. Number two is being organized as we speak, and you're right, we want to thank all those who participated and all the sponsors. It was quite a, quite a, quite a morning, or actually day, if you will. So, thanks a lot.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Duffield. I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors and have the City of Newport Beach, and was participated in a couple sessions, including a Veterans Outreach Program that I thought was very interesting and relevant to us, given our proximity to Pendleton and formerly El Toro Marine Base. And I have no items to put on a future agenda. So, Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through seven. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Counsel, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Councilman O'Neill?
None.
Councilman Piattar? Councilwoman Dixon?
None.
Councilman Hurdman?
None.
Councilman Avery?
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Duffield?
I have none.
I have none as well. Mayor Pro Tem Duffield, do you have a motion?
I do, I do. I would, nah. Thing is broken. I move the balance of the consent calendar, items one through seven.
I'll second.
In all its glory, as is where is. It's rare that we'd have nobody pulling something or recusing, so I make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a timely second from Councilman Hurdman. Councilman Piattar jumped the gun that was in the bay. Public, public comments on consent. Public comments on consent. Seeing none, bring it back to the dais. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, ordinance number 2,017-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adding chapter 15.19 to Title 15 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to provide an expedited streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. Hold on one more. Well, all in favor, raise your hand. Wonderful.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, back to you.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. For those in the back who are looking to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, please step forward, come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Oh, hi. My name's Ann Parker. And Mr. Avery, the Stuffed Surfer is going to be open pretty soon, they told me. We've been going there since the '60s, so they said it'd be open pretty soon. I'm here tonight, although I was just told by the city manager that I probably shouldn't speak about this, but I'm going to anyway because I'm here. I just, I'm really concerned about what's going on with our church, St. James the Great. We've been going there since the '70s. I'm sure you've been reading about it in the paper. And it's supposed to be confidential. Everybody knows it's Scott Burnham, one of our local guys. He's a developer, favored son of the Western soil. And I know that we're kind of a pro-development town right now. But I think that rezoning this church for development of any kind is a huge mistake. This property was given to the city of Newport Beach and the Episcopal diocese in, what, 1943? I think it would be a terrible mistake to rezone this, just to make more taxes. That's what it's all about, let's face it. And I really kind of resent the fact that someone from the city council or city would encourage people not to speak in public. I found out about this five years ago in council meetings. And when people start telling you not to speak in public, there's usually a problem. Something is wrong. And I, this gentleman has done some good development around town, but he's also a sharpshooter. This is a crooked bishop. I can say it because I belong to the church. I'm sure you've been following this. He's absolutely crooked. He might even end up in jail over all this. So, for this gentleman, knowing all of this, to get involved in a real estate deal here, it's like a jackal, you know? He saw weakness and he came in for the kill. And I'm appalled that he would do this. And I'm really offended because it was very important for him to have his daughter married in this church. I'm not even sure if he was a member. But, you know, money gets thrown around and you can do whatever you want. Well, if he can have his daughter married there, I'd like to have my mother buried there because she just passed away and it was her wish to be buried from that church. And I wish the city council would think about the whole community on this. It's not just our parishioners. We're fighting like hell. And I don't want any commissioners taking credit for any brokering of any deals. I've learned how that all works, too. These parishioners have really fought. They put their money where their mouth is. And I don't want any politics involved in this. Sorry. That's just how I feel about it. I just wish you'd leave the zoning the way it is, protect the peninsula. We've got enough going on down there. The trolleys are great, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have said before on the record that I support the zoning, being zoned church. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, just, Ann, you can come down anytime and talk.
Yes.
My name is Tom Treen, and I'd like to talk about the shark infestation and what the city's position on it is. I was in San Clemente a couple of weeks ago, and in their local newspaper, there was kind of a laundry list of what their city, a city spokesman said that they were doing about it, you know? And it seemed like a lot of it was kind of blunt instruments, close the beach, you know, helicopter, you know, overflights and stuff. And I'm local at Newport Beach spots, 56th Street, River Jetty, for like the last 50 years. And I don't know if any of you guys surf or whatever, but I'm sure you're in family. You have, that's a pretty important, you know, the culture of surfing in Newport Beach. And we're talking not only Newport Beach, we're talking about from Long Beach to San Clemente. That whole area's been affected by this infestation. And this infestation is developing a kind of a national reputation. I mean, it was a couple of weeks ago, like on every major news channel, there were pictures of guys standing like on the beach and, you know, 50 feet off into the water, there was, you know, the shadow of a great white. It's really, you know, all the surf community is pretty much affected about that. You know, we're not wusses, but this is a new kind of threat to our relaxed recreation. Certainly affects the beachgoers, like a couple of parties I've been to, that's a big topic in San Clemente and Newport and Huntington. It definitely, like I'm kind of connected with some local children's organizations, and they're channeling, you know, it's much safer from a parent's point of view to send your kid to a pool than to the beach right now. So, that's in the public consciousness. I'm sure it affects the local businessmen, merchants. I know when I go or when I don't go, there's places that, you know, that I'm not going to because I'm just kind of avoiding the situation more regularly than I normally would. And I'm wondering, okay, now we get to kind of the questions, and I don't know if you guys are going to respond, but I'm kind of wondering if there's metrics on what the attendance during Memorial Day weekend was, because that was a few weeks ago, and the issue was a little hotter. I know it fades. And I don't know if, what city's positions are on this, like, please don't report this because it's, you know, not good for our reputation. Who knows what that is? But, so, you know, do you got, you have metrics on a trolley, so maybe you have metrics on attendance at the beach during Memorial Day. That'd be interesting to look at. I'm wondering what the city's strategy on this is, because actually, the other night on PBS, there was this, a back-to-back Shark Week or whatever. And there was this one show that kind of went down a list of the, kind of the more high-tech ways to, if you're going to have overflight, it should be effective, okay? Visual overflight, just crude eyeballs on the ocean, especially with our water quality, is not too effective. It's like, you know, this was, they were discussing things in Perth, Australia, and clear water, 20% visuals from, you know... Okay. I'm just wondering what the city position on that is. And I hope there's a coalition between all the beach communities to deal with the county and the state, maybe change the fishing, maybe license a few fishermen to kind of cull a little bit the great white thing. That may or may not be the solution. There's technologies out there. I hope we're pursuing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Any other comments? Non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. This is kind of an afterthought to the study session this afternoon. At that study session, we heard about the city's plans for the Fourth of July last week, as part of which we heard this year, we're kind of cracking down on the big booming fireworks. But I did want to note, and between then and now, I verified that the budget that you approved last meeting, the city council part of that actually has $50,000 allocated for fireworks, which I suspect are not the safe and sane kind. And in past years, a portion of that was used for funding the fireworks display at the Newport Dunes, in return for which, per your city council policy B-12, city residents were allowed, not the parking, but they were allowed to walk in and watch the fireworks show for free. And since that was not mentioned in the presentation this afternoon, I was wondering if we're still sponsoring the fireworks show at the Newport Dunes as part of our Fourth of July celebration, and if city residents are still welcome to walk in for free. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kiff, any answer to that, for those watching?
Yes and yes. We are sponsoring it, and people are allowed and encouraged to walk in, bring blankets, bring chairs. It really gets going there about 9:00 o'clock, so most people start wandering over about 7:00 o'clock.
Right. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other public comments on non-agenda items, I'll go to all reports from city council and committee activities. Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Mr. Piattar.
None.
Mrs. Dixon.
None.
Mr. Hurdman.
None.
Mr. Avery.
None.
Mr. Duffield.
I'll be brief. I attended the Watershed Executive Committee at the Irvine Water District and wanted to just report, I haven't reported much to the dais on this, but I did want to comment that while we don't meet every month, we do meet. And I, my job is to be a thorn in their side and remind them that we are the recipient of all the trash, sediment, vegetation that comes from the several cities upstream from us. And we try to do that in a nice way. And our staff and Public Works head Dave Kiff are very hardworking at this and much more so than I. But we, just so the dais knows up here that my colleagues, that we are making tiny footsteps in the right direction in terms of our sediment control and our dredging ideas. And so, this meeting that we had was about the trash. And we're trying desperately to stop the trash from entering our harbor from the San Diego Creek with a machine called a water wheel. And it's a very exciting solution. It's probably a year or two away, but it does, it would stop at least 80 to 90% of the trash from even entering our bay. So, things are good with that. And our, our hope is that we continue to work with them. And the bureaucracy is agonizingly slow, but I'm confident that we'll get there. So, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, Councilwoman Dixon had a good suggestion, just for the sake of those watching this summer. If there's any insights, Mr. Kiff, you give to the shark situation. I know you're an avid shark jumper and swimmer and all things related to sharks, so please tell us what you know.
Sure. And I believe our webpage either has been updated or will be updated with the latest we know about the shark situation. Please know that especially regarding, with our lifeguards, especially regarding junior guards, we're taking every precaution we can. We're just being smart about it. That doesn't mean that sharks aren't out there, but we consult the experts, Mr. Low, Chad Low from Long Beach. We have monitoring systems. We were able to put up a drone. We've used the police helicopter before. The best advice is always swim near a lifeguard and be cautious. And we do hope the sharks will eventually go back to the way they were about four years ago where they weren't around.
Thank you. Professional swimming with sharks, our city manager, right there. I mean us, of course. We're the sharks. Onto current business. Staff, if we need a report.
So, we do have, sorry, Mr. Mayor, council members, this is a big dollar item. These are contracts that are actually funded in the budget but need to be approved by you. And this is for outside consultant services associated primarily with our building and life safety, fire life safety. We do have Simone Jurgis here, our building director, if you'd like a presentation. Otherwise, I'll turn that back to you for questions.
Are there any requests from the dais for presentation? Or any questions?
Just one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. O'Neill.
Simone, I checked yesterday, and it said we had 2,391 active building permits with a total valuation of $866 million. Could you explain what that means and how that factors into what we're looking at approving tonight?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Currently, we do have about 2,300 active building permits in the community. And what that means is that there's actually 2,300 construction projects that are underway. And it's everything from a small bathroom remodel to a new hotel that we have over in Lido Village. So, we have a lot of activity. Our activity has been growing for the last three to four years. We've had steady increase in activity. So, that puts a demand on our city staff. So, we always are looking for additional contract help to help us with the inspections or the plan review. With regards to valuation, we have to assess a valuation of value of all that construction activity. It is not the true construction cost, but it's really a value of bricks and sticks. If you want to gauge what is that true construction value, that development cost, I always tell people, just multiply our permit valuation by two. So, if we have $850 million of permit valuation, we're close to $1.7 billion in new development that's occurring throughout the entire city.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Are we discussing this item? So, have a question on this item?
Yes, please.
So, Mr. Kiff or Mr. Simone, the reason we're having this item is because we, as a city, have been operating very efficiently and outsourcing many of our building permit inspection, plan check activities. And I commend staff for doing that. And that's what we're authorizing in these contracts. But can we have an analysis, or maybe you can inform me now, inform us now, is it, very simply, is it more expensive to contract out, or is it more economically less expensive to bring that work into the city?
So, thank you, Councilmember Dixon. When I've done an analysis, I've looked at probably six different positions that are associated with this type of activity. Five of the six, if we assumed that we were hiring a new, a person new to government, in other words, a tier-three or a Pepper employee, for five of the six, it would be cheaper for us to do it in-house, even with the fully loaded costs of that person. For one of the six, it's not. And I think that one is permit counter technician. So, I would like to talk with you about this further. I don't think it's a need to delay these contracts. But as Simone was pointing out, we, we used to use these to soften out the peaks and the valleys, so that we had a core group of staff. And then if, if development impact spiked, we would oftentimes contract that spike out. But the spike has been fairly steady. So, we're doing a lot of contract work. And that cost analysis, to me, I think, needs to be discussed with you. It also requires us, with these contracts, to manage them such that the employees are appropriately, contract employees are appropriately used. But that's a discussion we would, we should talk with you about more. Again, I wouldn't delay the contracts, but it's a good question for all of you and for me, as we look at this.
Well, I appreciate that. I would like to hear more at a later time when you're ready to present it, because just coincidentally, perhaps, we all received a letter from a constituent resident this week that was having some, I think it was Mr. Avery's district, was having some issues with a contract plan checker. And I don't know what the facts were, other than what he communicated to us. But there seemed to be some quality of work issues. And I just would like to make sure, I think, as I said a moment ago, I think it is positive that we've been outsourcing to deal with the spikes. But if this is more of a continuous run rate now, how are we best serving our constituents, our residents, and for the best service at the lowest cost? So, I would like to, in the future, have a report to compare that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman.
I had a similar concern expressed to me by someone over the weekend who had not an in-house inspector, but, I don't want to say outhouse inspector, outsourced, there you go, inspector, and a discrepancy between what the city was requiring versus what the contract inspector was requiring had a, had pretty hefty cost implications. So, I would hope that those kind of problems don't exist in the future if these contracts are approved.
Thank you, Mr. Hurdman. The, we do have two contracted inspectors that we do utilize on a daily basis. When there are issues out in the field, the inspector, whether it's in-house or contract, is required to talk to their supervisor, and their supervisor will communicate through me. So, we do try to problem solve all our issues that do resolve. We try to be practical about all the issues that do come up. Quality control is very important, and that's something that we're constantly trying to stress, and we'll continue stressing going forward.
If I could add one thought there, I've been city manager since 2009, and I think those first couple of years after 2009, you as a council would have received five to 10 complaints a month about this activity. And I've got to give great credit to Simone and to Kim Brandt for, it's so rare that you get a complaint like that. So, and not just the way they've organized the staff... So, and not, not just the way they've organized the staff, the work they do, but also, these are quality contractors, too. So, so the complaints do come in, but they're fairly small. Again, you'd be, have been blown away by how many you would have gotten back in that era. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Public comments on this item?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. As we've heard, this is a request for your approval of a series of contracts with outside firms that would be performing services that were in past years performed by city staff. I have three comments about it. The first is, since most people in the city don't find themselves in need of plan check or inspection services every year, if someone could remind us whether the public sees a uniform schedule of fees when they go in for these kinds of services, or there's a difference in fee depending on which of these contract firms, because they have different costs and prices, does everybody see the same rate, independent of whether it's a private company or an in-house, and do they vary between them? Second comment is the council is being asked to ratify choices that were from a fairly long list of applicants, like one here, you have 12 different firms applying. Staff is recommending contracts with four of them. I'd like to point out that, as in many such things in this city and elsewhere, where the decision makers are provided with something like this, you really don't have much to go on as to whether those are good recommendations or not. This staff report is pretty much silent on how the recommendations were made. Apparently, some anonymous panel of staff or somebody went through the applicants and screened them and picked those. You don't know what the criteria were. You don't know why one was rated higher than another, or even, this doesn't even give ratings for them. So it's kind of a dark art there, I think, of how those were selected, and I don't see any rational way, because the decision makers know whether these are good choices or not. And the final comment is, I am curious, since the planning and inspection field is kind of, I would imagine, a somewhat closed community with people moving from one place to another, I'm wondering if we checked if any of these firms are employing people who worked for the city or managed by people who worked for the city in past years, because we do have a city council policy, it's now part of policy F-14, that special council scrutiny would be required if any of the firms employ people who were regular city employees within the last five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay. So let's bring it back to the diocese, their motion? Okay. I heard a motion by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Dixon, seconded by Mayor Protem Duffield.
Yes.
Any discussion on this? All right. Seeing none, if you'd show our hands, Madam Clerk. There we go. Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. Onto item eight, which I don't think we need to report, but perhaps someone, you could frame it up, Madam Clerk.
Item nine is the annual appointments for boards and commissions. Before council members, there are paper ballots. Note that in order to be appointed, the members need to receive at least four ballots. Prior to me reading the votes, I recommend also taking public comments. On building and fire board of appeals, one of the terms will expire in 2019, and for harbor commission, one of the terms will expire in 2018. Otherwise, the other terms expire in 2021.
Thank you. Public comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, one point of clarification. When you say that one of the, one of the building and fire appeals will end early, and we have to vote for three people, and there are only three people listed, how do we determine who gets the short end of the straw?
I was going to recommend that since two of the three are incumbents, that they continue on with their term, so they would go on until 2021, and then the Audrey Cook would receive the 2019, but that's, of course, council's decision.
And how would you like us to make that decision?
I can do straw vote, or...
Okay. I, I'm fine with that, but, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we incorporate that in the final tally. That's agreeable to me as well.
And similarly, for harbor commission, if Mr. Gerling does receive appointment, reappointment, then he receives his term of four years, and then the other person would receive the 2018, and then have to reapply for next year.
Perfect. I think that makes sense. Public comment?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name, one last time, is Jim Mosher, and my comment on this, the subject of this is appointments. You have a list of nominees. The nominees were screened from a much larger pool of nominees by a city council ad hoc appointments committee, as it says here on the agenda. And my comment is, I do not recall the city council ad hoc appointments committee itself having been formally appointed and ratified at a city council meeting. That usually happens in May, and I don't recall that happening this year, and I just think it's bad policy and precedent for committees to become appointed without the public seeing them being appointed, or at the time of appointment, knowing who is on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, shall we cast votes?
I want to have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilman Dixon.
A couple of things. Did I, a clarification now on the civil service board. Mr. Wood has now been appointed, we approved that last meeting, to Newport Beaching Company.
Correct.
So how many are we voting for tonight on some?
You are still voting for one, for the scheduled vacancy. Mr. Wood's vacancy is unscheduled vacancy, so he has to go through the Madiac process, and his, his appointment was actually made by the safety, by police, fire lifeguards, so they would also be making the nominations to return back to council.
Of course, they would have to go through that process.
Correct. This nomination for civil service board at this time is a city council appointment.
Okay. And then just one general comment, if you permit me, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, first of all, thank members of the public who have submitted applications for council appointments to boards or commissions. I've talked a lot about this, and I just want to read some numbers. Last year, we had a total of 64 applicants, men and women, of which 29.6% were women last year, because I've been really trying to push for women, as everyone knows. This year, we had a total, men and women, 110 applicants. That's just fantastic to see that type of support for civic involvement by members of our community. And of that number of 110, 40% were women, and I'm just thrilled with that number. And while many, many, many applicants are all well-qualified, not everyone is going to be appointed this evening, because there just aren't that many open positions, but my message to every applicant is, try again, keep trying, because many appointments historically take two or three times at the applicant pool. So do not give up, and by demonstrating your commitment to the city and repeated applications, and your application is, stays alive for two years. So please know that your interest in our community is appreciated, and hopefully, at some point, will be recognized. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. No other requests to speak before we vote? I'll do the first tally.
For the board of library trustees, there is one vacancy. Councilmember Herdman voted for Hugh Logan. Councilmember Avery, Douglas Coulter. Councilmember Pieter, Douglas Coulter. Councilmember O'Neill, Douglas Coulter. Councilmember Dixon, Douglas Coulter. Mayor Protem Duffield, Douglas Coulter. And Mayor Muldoon, Douglas Coulter. So Douglas Coulter is reappointed to board of library trustees. Next is building and fire board of appeals. There are three seats. Brian Jeanette, Richard Lors, and Audrey Cook. Councilmember Herdman voted for all three. Councilmember Avery voted for all three. Councilmember Pieter voted for all three, requesting that Richard Lors receive the shorter term. Councilmember O'Neill, all three. Councilmember Dixon, all three. Mayor Protem Duffield, all three. And Mayor Muldoon, all three. And has that changed, that the incumbents receive the longer terms? I just want to make sure if there's a majority.
I'm going to do that in the motion at the end.
Okay, later. Okay. City arts commission, there are three vacancies. So councilmember Herdman voted for Lynn Selich, Michael Kerr, and Grace Devine. Councilmember Avery voted for Lynn Selich, Michael Kerr, and Miriam Baker. Councilmember Pieter voted for Lynn Selich, Miriam Baker, and Grace Devine. Councilmember O'Neill voted for Lynn Selich, Miriam Baker, and Grace Devine. Councilmember Dixon voted for Lynn Selich, Michael Kerr, and Marie Little. Mayor Protem Duffield voted for Lynn Selich, Michael Kerr, and Grace Devine. Mayor Muldoon voted for Lynn Selich, Miriam Baker, and Marie Little. We will need to do a second vote with Michael Kerr, Miriam Baker, and Grace Devine, all receiving four votes. Lynn Selich will be appointed, reappointed. She received seven. Marie Little received two. For civil service board, there is one vacancy. Councilmember Herdman voted for Jane Delagrotta. Councilmember Avery voted for Jane Delagrotta. Councilmember Pieter voted for Howard Herzog. Councilmember O'Neill voted for Jane Delagrotta. Councilmember Dixon voted for Jane Delagrotta. Mayor Protem Duffield voted for Howard Herzog. And Mayor Muldoon voted for Howard Herzog. Jane Delagrotta received four votes, so she is the new civil service board member. For harbor commission, there are two vacancies. Councilmember Herdman voted for David Gerling and Donald Yon. Councilmember Avery, David Gerling and Marie Marston. Councilmember Pieter, David Gerling and Ira Beer. Councilmember O'Neill, David Gerling and Ira Beer. Councilmember Dixon, David Gerling and Marie Marston. Mayor Protem Duffield, David Gerling and Ira Beer. Mayor Muldoon, David Gerling and Ira Beer. David Gerling received seven votes. He is reappointed. Ira Beer received four votes, so he will receive the, well, most likely, the June 2018, although we will double-check that. For PBNR, Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, there are two vacancies. Councilmember Herdman voted for Walter Howold and Heather Ignatyn. Councilmember Avery, Walter Howold, Howold, sorry, Heather Ignatyn. Councilmember Pieter, Walter Howold and Heather Ignatyn. Councilmember O'Neill, Walter Howold and Heather Ignatyn. Councilmember Dixon, Walter Howold, Heather Ignatyn. Mayor Protem Duffield, Walter Howold, Heather Ignatyn. And Mayor Muldoon, Walter Howold and Diane Durity. Walter Howold is reappointed, and Heather Ignatyn is appointed. And for planning commission, there are two vacancies. Councilmember Herdman voted for Elizabeth Kylie and Lauren Kleiman. Councilmember Avery voted for Elizabeth Kylie and Curtis Elmer. Councilmember Pieter voted for Lee Lowry and Curtis Elmer. Councilmember O'Neill voted for Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry. Councilmember Dixon voted for Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry. Mayor Protem Duffield voted for Lee Lowry and Curtis Elmer. And Mayor Duffield voted for Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry.
Mayor Muldoon.
I'm sorry, Mayor Muldoon. Thank you. Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry. So Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry both received four votes. So we will need to do a revote on, on city arts commission for Michael Kerr, Miriam Baker, or Grace Devine.
Okay, so let's, I want to, so everyone else, all these other ones are settled?
Correct.
For city arts commission, Lynn Selich remains. And then for the two remaining slots, we need to choose from the three candidates you just named.
Correct.
Okay. Please name the candidates that are the choices for those two slots again.
Michael Kerr, Miriam Baker, and Grace Devine. So number two, three, and four on the list for city arts commission.
We should vote for two.
We vote for two.
Vote for two, correct. Thank you. as one is already occupied by Mrs. Selich. So for councilmember Dixon, she voted for Michael Kerr and Miriam Baker. Councilmember O'Neill, Miriam Baker and Grace Devine. Councilmember Pieter, Miriam Baker and Grace Devine. Councilmember Herdman, Michael Kerr and Grace Devine. Councilmember Avery, Michael Kerr and Miriam Baker. Mayor Protem Duffield, Michael Kerr and Grace Devine. Mayor Muldoon, Miriam Baker and Grace Devine. So Miriam Baker and Grace Devine each received five votes. Michael Kerr received four votes. So Miriam Baker and Grace Devine, in addition to Lynn Selich.
Thank you. Tell you, we have such amazing applicants, including Hugh Logan, who's a beloved citizen, and as Will O'Neill and I know, the great Tom Malcolm, one of the most legendary civil attorneys in Orange County. And I hope that candidates like these candidates continue to apply. We take into consideration how many times you apply and your interest level, and appreciate all the applications that were submitted for these service spots.
Mayor, did you want to double-check on the shortened terms?
That's right, thank you. I'm going to make a motion. At this time, I'll make a motion to fill the vacancies with the approved appointees that receive the majority vote, with incumbents to receive full renewal of the full term, and non-incumbents to receive the shorter terms.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any debate on this issue? All right, let's, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero. Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you. Any motions to reconsider? Thank you. Any motions to reconsider? Hearing none, we are adjourned.